Our first of many study sessions, I'm sure, regarding ARPA, if we could first stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and divisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So we do have one person who's not here tonight is Jason, so he went ahead and put in, just for everybody's benefit, I know you've all been hearing about ARPA for a long time, but he did put his memo in there. And just a couple of things that I wanted to highlight on his memo and why the board waited till now to talk about ARPA is, the final rule actually just came out a few months ago, although ARPA itself as an interim was out a while ago. There were a lot of changes, a lot of us fighting for more leniency, and the original one was broadband, which when we looked into that, I think our cheapest estimate was 25 million to put in broadband, which of course, you're not saving 4 million at that point, you're spending 21. Another one was to get access to clean drinking water, which we already have because we have a great system. Another version was bringing, or getting lead out of your pipes, again, we don't have. So a lot of the issues in the beginning were, we're already ahead of the game on those, and they were trying to give people money for those areas that couldn't even handle the pandemic in a sense of, nobody could be online at home for work or school because they had no broadband. Nobody had access to clean water as much as we do. So the original version of ARPA was very limited. Luckily, they listened to a lot of communities, a lot of the officials here, as well as other places fought for leniency, and the final rule came out in April, which anybody under 10 million can actually use those with a lot more leniency, and we got 4.4. So that opened up the possibilities for all the department heads who have a lot of different ideas, and I'm sure all the board members have ideas in the community, to actually have some robust discussions on what we can use this money for. One thing to also point out, this is a once, a one-time only thing. It is not going to come back around because that means we've been through another pandemic. So I am hoping that this doesn't come back around, because that was not fun, and we don't want to deal with that again. Another thing to point out is that it cannot be used to pay debt service, it cannot be used to pay off pensions, you cannot use it to replenish any of your reserves. So although there were a lot of suggestions from the community in the beginning of pay on OPEB, we can't. Another was, spread it out over 10 years, you can't, because it does have to be obligated by December 31st, 2024, and it has to be fully spent and out of your expenses here by December 31st, 2026. So although there are a lot of people with a lot of ideas, a lot of them aren't legal. So that's why we had to wait for the legal ruling on what we could do. Another thing that's frustrating to those of us that have large communities called townships, this was done at a federal level, where a lot of states don't have townships. So when federal people get together and they think about townships, they think about 3,000, 4,000 people, they think they don't have water, they don't have sewer, they don't realize that we're almost 45,000 people and we're larger than most cities, or many cities in this state. So we were what was considered a non-entitlement unit, we were not entitled to any funds in the beginning. Anybody who was a township under 50,000 was not automatically given funds. We were luckily given 4.4 million, but when people say, "Why didn't you get 32 million like Bay City, who has 30,000 people," they're a city. "Why didn't you get," I think it was 13 million or something, that Niles, Michigan, a tiny little city got, they're a city. And unfortunately, a lot of federal people just don't know what a township is. We were hurt in that respect. So that's just kind of the gist of why we waited so long and why we're here today, kind of starting the first of many discussions. We do have, we figured we'd start first with getting some ideas from the department heads. So I can't pick my favorite child, so you all got listed on whoever turned it in first, so there's no favorites. But if you want to start, actually, let me go ahead and ask if there's any public comment, I don't see any, but is there any public comment?
Comment after the department.
Oh, okay. Great. Then we'll go ahead and start with the study session from the department heads. We had nine of 13 that did have quite a few suggestions, and those were turned in. The other four departments either had no needs or their needs extended further than 2026. And again, all of this has to be spent and given out by 2026. So we will start with, our first one is, oh, that's me. This is actually from an administration perspective, the three of us when we were talking about large ideas that affect all 13 departments. You know, when you think about at a board level or at a township-wide, and three things that really stood out to us was, one, the strategic plan, it hasn't existed since 2014, and if you don't have a long-term plan, that's why sometimes decisions are made in a funnel, in a vacuum, and not thinking about consequences later. So by fixing that problem and having a strategic plan, it helps with setting incremental goals, too. You also can't go from zero to 60 overnight. We can't all of a sudden fix everything in one day. So the strategic plan lets you know where you are, where you want to be, and how you're going to get there. So that's one thing that would be suggested. It usually takes about 12 to 18 months. There's a lot of community involvement, a lot of meetings, to get impressions of where people want to go. But we have not bid it out or even considered the cost yet, because we wanted to make sure if that was something that would be approved. A larger one that we were thinking of is records management. We're 195 years old, things were paper-based for a long time, then there's a hybrid, now you've got digital. You also have 13 departments saving things differently. So when people send in a FOIA and they want to know about a specific house, some departments may do it by address, some departments may do it by name, then you've got to know how many names lived there. So even the ease of people getting access to transparent documents, that would be something called records management, where how do we, as a uniform code, come together and say, "Going forward, this is how documents are saved, this is where you save it," and we can go forward. That would be somebody who has a specialty in that. They would come together, meet with all the departments, talk about how they save, what they save, and kind of come up with that creative way that we go forward. That one is estimated to be about 12 months. It could be sooner, but some have set up to 12 months. And again, we didn't, we didn't reach out yet on cost for that one. The one we did reach out on cost for was the one we thought would be quick and easy, but it's a three to 10-year process with the amount of documents that we do have. Once somebody tells us how to save them, it will take anywhere from three to 10 years to actually do the scanning and the saving and the reorganizing. So of course, that would be an outside source that we would go through, because we're already pretty stretched that that isn't anybody here at the township that could be doing that at that level. So that, we did have bid out, actually, Tom was involved on that one as well. He's now a recent graduate with his master's, so he did this as part of his, his degree. So he did bid out, and we had bids anywhere from 300,000 to 500,000, and anywhere from three to 10 years. But again, that would be them catching up the last 195 and us moving forward. So those are kind of the three at like a board level that would kind of make things easier. And now you get to stop here and me talk, and we can go on to everybody else. All right. So we'll start with Patty. We have Patty Volker with Planning, Building, and Ordnance. And also feel free to ask as you go, this is kind of a laid-back, you could wait till the end, you can do whatever you, ask as you go if you want.
That sounds good. Well, welcome. As I was looking at what would be beneficial for planning, building, and ordinance, I did small-scale and large-scale, and then I certainly will endorse a lot of the comments from my fellow department heads, and obviously, there's a lot of overlap, and as far as responsibility or duties or benefits, I certainly will be supporting a lot of the comments and recommendations from other departments, and clearly talking about the record retention and scanning. You'll note that the second and third item that I speak to on my wish list, if you will, has to do with the need for scanning, the need for copying, the need for managing paper as we still are, processing applications, and we also doing, you know, paper mailings and so forth. So just to touch on the second item first, additional copy scanner, approximately about $35,000. We have a large volume of mailings that go out of the department. We have one copier, and we also have very, we have three very active divisions. And so we have learned to kind of manage our copying needs, scanning needs around those type of entities, which, those responsibilities, and I don't think that's really efficient in our time. Now, we do have some secondary supplemental, but not to the level of what we would need as far as that copier, so we're asking for that additional copier. Secondly, that the two desktop scanners, $4,000 in total to scan approved ZPA and planning site applications and minor building permit applications and plans. Again, it's coupling with that idea of, we're not wanting to save hard copy any longer, and we're trying to scan and being more efficient in that scanning. We now have a huge room called central storage, which is up to the rafters with paper. And so how do you go about, you know, having that scanned? And that's fine to go retroactively, but what do you do on a daily basis? We're finding that to do it daily, weekly, monthly, is a lot more efficient, as opposed to trying to deal with something at the end of the year, and now you have a mountain of paper. So, you know, looking at what we can do on the spot at the desk, again, this is interim level, I 100% support these, the suggestions made by the supervisor of having someone come in with a integrated plan for all the departments to be able to then participate in and be able to then not have the redundancy, where we have notices, we have agendas, we have postings to the website, and then we have hard copies, and then we have something that's scanned in to a department database. It just seems that we really could do something much more efficient, and I fully endorse what, what Martin and Danny and Brian have been wanting to go forward with that. So that's my cheerleader pitch for that. And then lastly, oh, and first, the drone. This is something that came up with our, speaking with the inspectors and the building official. You know, as we have a lot of rooftop inspections, we have these, we have some large residential homes with varied roof heights and pitches and so forth, that that might be an opportunity to be able to utilize some technology and a tool that would be able to be beneficial to us. And also, in some instances, there could be a case where we'd want to know the progress of a particular project, well, we could be able to, you know, utilize a drone to be able to keep that footage. And so working with IT on what type of software we would need, what kind of management would that entail, and what's the duration of maintaining that, you know, so there'd be a little extra effort in being able to manage that going forward. And then lastly, the future needs. And I think maybe now that I'm understanding the timeframe of it, even talking about the first item is the master plan update. Now, this is different than the strategic plan, the master plan update is the land use plan, one of which we're obligated by the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act to adopt. And so as that comes to fruition in its 20-year plan, in 2027, backing up, we're going to be wanting to anticipate that timeframe, and so we very well could go out to RFP to be able to then solicit qualified professional consultants to be able to come in and engage with the community to be able to produce that final document for us. That is a 14 to 16-month timeframe, so we very well could back that into the timeframe, maybe possibly to utilize some of those ARPA funds. So I offer that as a suggestion to you. And then the other three areas, or two areas, is dealing with our building permit and building tracking and plan tracking, site tracking software, which is BSNA. And as, as these products and updates are occurring with this software, we're finding that there could be really a good potential for us to be able to utilize something more in the field. Our inspectors are out in the field, they're taking notes, they're coming into the office, they're entering their data, and it's not until that point that, once it's in the data, is able to be accessible online. Wouldn't it be really great if we have inspectors who are in the field, give it that green sticker, it's entered into an iPad with all the details of information, and that's what's lacking right now, and then having that homeowner see at 3 o'clock they got their green sticker? That's kind of the vision that we're looking at. It's software that's not developed yet, I know there's some discussions with other communities, they've kind of modified some of their processes to kind of deal with some sort of iPads, it's just not efficient. It doesn't have the level of detail yet that we would expect and that we have in our inspection process. And then the other item is BSNA, to develop electronic application plan review programming. We are oftentimes the manager of plan reviews, whether it's for building or whether it's through planning, where we're actually asking for input and receiving responses back from other agencies, other departments for a project. And so to have some, have a program management software that would integrate with BSNA would be ideal. That way then, we're not manually having to see if so-and-so actually produced their revision and they got their notes back to us so that we could process that. They'd actually go in, enter their notes, and everyone would be able to see that they've entered their notes, and then the process could, you know, progress. Now, whether it be internal or whether they'd be open to the public, again, it would be up to what type of software we could engage with, and again, that would be working with IT, but I think there's a real future to that, and certainly getting out of the manual management and using a software that would be a little bit more beneficial. And then lastly, maybe this is a little commercial for what might come later in your presentations, but should the, there be any discussion about the police department having some sort of a building expansion, building addition, we would wholeheartedly welcome the opportunity to expand in our planning, building, and ordinance department. We have 2,500 square feet, of which we have, say, 17 employees. So if we could support the police department moving elsewhere, and if we could expand into their area...
She means in a loving way.
I already have plans. Then that would be obviously much more, much more efficient, be able to utilize our offices, be able to serve the public in a better capacity, other than having 17 of us behind a Plexiglas glass right now. So with that, that's my presentation to you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions now or later, whatever, your pleasure.
Do you have any initial questions? I figure it's a lot to take in all at once.
Thank you, Patty.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
And next we have Chief Leroy. Hey, you're off the crutches.
Fire Department has a couple of recommendations for use of the money, and then also, we did, broke into some future needs that we're going to make expenditures that are coming up in the near future that we have to start planning for. First need is, number one priority is, Station 3 at Maple and Telegraph is in dire need of replacement. It was first built in 1960, last, it was added, a second bay was added on in 1978, and that's pretty much the last time the building was touched. Still has the original windows in it, it still has the original floor plan. Heating, there's been upgrades to heating and cooling and things of that nature, but it really doesn't serve the purpose that it used to. We're buying apparatus and designing apparatus to fit a station instead of just ordering an apparatus for our needs. We're also running into apparatus have gotten longer. The new rescue trucks that we just, the rescue truck that we just got with a pickup truck front end is now longer, so I can't put it at that station and store a reserve fire engine behind it. So I have to move trucks around constantly to be able to fit everything where it needs to go, like a jigsaw puzzle. And one of the big things is that station had to be, all the stations had to, but when we hired our first female about five years ago, we had to do quick modifications to all of our fire stations, and that was done, we had to modify the dorm rooms, the bathrooms, and all of that, and that was done by the firefighters just to make it usable. So this fire station is really, it's been 42 years since it's been added on to, and it's just not meeting the needs of the township anymore. Current cost estimates, about $10 million, but that's an estimate, that's went up probably about $2.5 to $3 million in the last three years. They're telling us about 52% cost increase over the last three years on commercial property building at a conference that I went to this fall. So that would be need number one. Need number two is 105-foot aerial ladder platform. It's about $1.6 to $1.7 billion, million dollars, and it's to begin replacement of our 75-foot apparatus. Many, in 2006, we bought a, we had a 105-foot apparatus that we went into litigation with a apparatus company over, and we, the model was changed back then to go with two 75-foot, what they call quints. These apparatus are good at everything, but not great at any one thing. On almost every additional scene, as you saw at Oakland Hills, or the house fires that we have, and the trucks being out by the road, it's, we're constantly standing there saying, "I wish I had 30 more feet of reach or elevation." The other thing is, is the bucket that it houses, the bucket provides safety and security to the crews that are operating for extended periods of time. They can be on air, that air system is plugged into the, into the truck, so you're not on your air pack, so you can stay up there for longer periods. And one of the things that's nice about it is, is it's a 25-plus year lifespan, as opposed to a 15-year lifespan on our current ladders, and that's because we would then rotate, this truck would be only for fires, we would start our replacement schedule and be replacing the ladders that we currently have for, for, as engines instead of, and only have one taller ladder truck. Again, and part of that reason is, ladder one that we, that we bought to fit a fire station only fits in station one. So when we go to replace ladder one, I can't rotate ladder one back to a reserve apparatus because it only fits in one fire station. So we got, if engine four, engine three goes out of service, we have to change two to three trucks around to get trucks to where they fit in fire stations. So if we go back to just a standard four engines and four fire stations and one ladder truck, that would be going on every fire and not going on every medical or every emergency incident in this township, you're going to increase the lifespan of the truck back to the 25-plus years that it would, that a ladder truck is expected to, to reach, because you're not putting the miles on it and driving the wheels off of it. This also, the increases in cost, the ladder trucks when we bought them last time, where it's about $750,000 a piece, our ladder trucks now are $1 million. This million-dollar truck that it used to be is now 1.6 to 1.7. The costs have just increased that astronomically, so it doesn't meet the fiscal sense to keep buying million-dollar ladder trucks at 15 years, as opposed to having one that's only on a 25-year cycle. And then some of the future recommendations that we're going to have, or the future needs that we have are, and I believe, some of these are addressed, I know in the IT schedule, but we need to do some station security upgrades, key card entry, parking lot cameras. The vestibules in all of our stations were built by firefighters, but they're not really secure. They have a very unsecure window system and a hollow corridor. It's not going to keep anybody out that wants to come in. And sleeping area security, some of the stations are bigger, and I would like them to have more of a, they won't hear anything that's going on in the fire station at night. So those are some of the security up. The key card entry is for, instead of changing the locks on all four stations, the codes, upgrade the security, everybody gets an entry point. That way, if we have a discipline problem, or as somebody retires, we can shut off one ID and change it out, instead of changing all the stations and all the codes and having to remember what the new codes are all the time. So those are some of the security upgrades. The EMS power structures, they were purchased in 2009 on an AFG grant, and a lot of these grant items, they're great when you get the grant, but it means you get them all at once, and you have to replace them all at once because they're starting to fail. So those were bought in 2009, they have reached their life expectancy. We have a robust maintenance plan, they come out and maintenance them all the time, but now it's just getting, we can't get parts for them anymore. So they're recommending that we replace those, so that cost is, there's five of them at $160,000. The Lucas CPR devices, four of those, they were bought in 2016, electronics, all the parts, things like that, circuit boards are beginning to fail. The saw jaws of life, every year they come up with the new cars, with the new metals and the new materials, and the jaws are constantly being upgraded, so we would need a new, we need a new set for the saw truck that is going to be delivered with the hydraulics, because the hydraulic ones don't work as they were designed back in the 70s and 80s. So all of these new battery-operated ones are constantly being changed for the new vehicles that are being manufactured. So a complete set of those is about $44,000, and that's a ram, a spreader, and a cutter. Central fire has numerous issues that are coming up, apparatus floor drains, plumbing, apparatus room, the floor is beginning to fail in several areas, and that's partly because during the last upgrade or remodel in '09, that wasn't, the apparatus room wasn't really touched. It was a renovation instead of remodel or redo. So those things were, all the holes, all the saw cutting of the floors that were done back then, as you pull these big trucks in, or the cracks are beginning to show, and crack on the, on the cracks in the saw cutting that was done back then. We have numerous station remodels, when you do better accommodate, the male, female firefighters, like I said, none of our fire stations took that into account before five years ago. And so they don't have, they don't have dorms, they don't, they basically have cubicles with curtains across the, the sleeping areas and changing areas. Just something a little bit more robust for them, to give them more, not security, but just privacy. Also, the cancer prevention upgrades, everything that they're finding with firefighters is relating back to cancer these days, from their turnout gear, if you've seen the studies that are being, the turnout gear they wear is giving them cancer, to the smoke, to everything else that they have, they wear, to the diesel exhaust of the trucks. There are things that can be done with the stations for positive pressure to keep things out in the bay, away from the living areas, and things like that. And, and the employee wellness upgrades, we've really put, we're trying to put into stock some of these, not just cancer, but the wellness and mental health of the employees. And thing, when they design a fire station, or they retrofit a fire station, coming up with different ways to make it so when they come back and they're stressed, or it's just brings them back to an even, mentally just relaxes them, brings them down slower, and brings a balance into their hectic work, work-life balance. It was pretty eye-opening, the conference that we went to on how they design a station, what things they're doing with, from lighting to just the way they design a building now, taking into, taking into account emotional support these days. Another one we'd like to, is a technology upgrade, is adding, basically, currently we have iPads on a system that we've put into the fire trucks, and those iPads are just very hard to maintain individually on our end. So we, I would like to go to a mobile data terminal, very similar to, or a computer very similar to a police car, that is directly connected into the county system, so that way, when the truck goes en route, they can hit a button and it tells dispatch when the trucks en route, it automatically changes it, and so the, that's $7,500 a year plus the cost of the computer, and that lets them do that. And then ideally, I'd like to get to the BRIC Station Alerting System, we've looked at this several times in conjunction with the police department several years ago. It's very expensive, but what it allows us to do is, it alerts the fire stations for the type of call that they have, it also provides an automated dispatch voice to the type of call from the time it's hit entered, saving on the police dispatcher's side for when they're doing EMD, if they just type in medical emergency and the address, the computer's telling them what's going on with the, where the call's at, and what type of incident that it is, and the dispatchers can continue doing the EMD without interruption, and then when our crew's getting route, then the dispatcher would then tell them what's going on and where they're going and what they're going on. It's very expensive, it's, the initial setup was $200,000, and then it was an annual fee on top of that. But we already use a portion of BRIC for free, which allows us for the, tells all of our personnel where incidents are on any given day, if they want to pay attention to it. And that's just some of the things that we've adopted over time. Some technology upgrades are in our near future. So, as with that, I take any questions.
Questions, yeah? All right.
Okay.
Now we have our Director of IT, Gil Sadler, for Information Technology.
Good afternoon. I don't get the opportunity to stand before you very often, so I am just going to give you a little bit of background about the ID department. We're responsible for all IT services, computer network, the security of that network, all the devices that attach to that. In addition to that, we're responsible for the communications, which are the telephone systems, the wireless cell phones, smartphones, all the security closed-circuit TV systems, access controls and alarms, so we're responsible for a lot of the building security, as well as the visual systems and the 911 dispatch system, that I know Chief Gallagher is going to talk to you a little bit about. And we're also responsible for the geographic information systems, which may And we're also responsible for the geographic information systems, which maybe you know less about. I'm not sure that, it's used by all the departments here. It supports a lot of decision-making. It supports when they're on calls and they need to talk to residents about where they live. It helps doing plan reviews because they can see the site, look at historical aerials, pull up engineering scans. It really gets that digital data in the hands of the employees so they can make more efficient responses for the residents and better decisions overall. All of these services are provided by our centralized IT department. And over the years, we've, we've had great strides. We've been looked at as a model by many of the surrounding communities for the services we provide. Back in 2008, 2009, we were very fortunate to have the Capitol Building Project, which created the Senior Center Building, the DPW or Public Works Facility, as well as the Central Fire renovation, which Chief Leroy referred to. When that was added almost 15 years ago now, that tremendously increased, increased the square footage of the township that technology needed to be in and supported by. A lot of that has come to its useful life, end of its useful life. And that's one of the things on the IT infrastructure that I talk about. We have network switch replacements, 10-plus years old. They're failing. It's the maintenance that is great when you get a grant or a capital building program, but unless you're reinvesting in that technology, you're not keeping it current and reliable. And that's, that's, most of the things that I'm asking for are things we already have that we just need to update. I gave you a huge list, so I'll try to be quick with them. I kinda gave you, you know, my, top of my mind things that, that we do need. All of them are things we're currently doing. They're not pie in the sky wishes. They're things that township employees rely on every day to do their jobs. The first one we're gonna talk about is IT infrastructure. Again, the network switches. We have an old phone system that was done 10, 12 years ago, components of it. It's, it's time to look at replacing that, potentially a cloud solution or some other non-premise solution than we have right now. We'd gain a lot of flexibility within that. We were able to piecemeal it together during COVID to make it work with people answering from home, but there's a lot better solutions out there that would take us forward. We'd like to upgrade our wireless access throughout the campus, an IT help desk ticketing system. And the township fiber backbone that goes to all of our township campuses, campus buildings, was also installed during the Capitol Building Program. There's many runs that are still working fine and don't need to be addressed, but there's some runs that were installed that are slower that we need to look at. So that's something I'd like to look at to make sure we're serving all our buildings in an efficient manner. Another driving factor in IT is obviously cybersecurity. As a police agency, we're required to meet SEJIS requirements, which is the Court Justice Information System. Those requirements are very stringent and it's not an option. You have to do these if we wanna be able to provide police lien access and information to the, access to the information they need. So I have quite a few things in there, expanding our multi-factor authentication, endpoint security, some better detection and monitoring, email encryption for the police specifically, and file and transfer compliance programs for the police. Another important thing that IT looks at is our ability to recover from disasters, whether that be cyber, environmental, in a way, COVID, right, was a disaster of a different sort where we had to react and respond. We wanna make sure that we're able to provide continuity to government, no matter what the situation is. So one of the things we're looking at is Microsoft 365. That's $75,000 the first year. Unfortunately, that's a reoccurring cost, but that eventually we're going to have to go there. That's Microsoft's new model. But it would provide us a lot more in flexibility, better efficiency and collaboration for our users as well. Tyler, which is our financial software, is a local on-premise solution. We would like to have that cloud hosted so that we would have that ability to recover in a disaster or have that remotely accessible very easily by employees as needed. That would be a benefit for that. And then as far as backup internet and failover solution, we have a single internet access for the township. If that's cut or goes down, we don't have redundancy for that. We have some backup that we have planned for using wireless, but it would be much better, since we have our own emergency operations center, to have a redundant option for that. The second slide, if we could go to that, thank you. Focus is more on building security, closed-circuit cameras, those controls and alarms. So that's again, a lot of our infrastructure. Again, that was, that was, a lot of it was installed 15 years ago, 10, 15 years ago or more. The door locks and the strikes and all the hardware, they're just starting to fail. We're constantly replacing them as they fail, but we need to get out ahead of it. So we're not inconveniencing township employees to do their job and that we can, we're not interrupting every day with a fire to put out. We need to get up and go ahead of, get in advance of some of these things. The police cell door controls, we'd like to move those to electric slight, electric strike. We have a jail here and that needs to be secured properly. Chief Leroy mentioned the fire stations. They are not set up for coed dorms and so we were able to piecemeal along with their construction that they did, alarming in those areas, but it's not a good solution. It's not a long-term solution and all those stations need to be looked at so that you can hear the alerts in the women's bathroom. You can hear everything throughout and make it a more functioning space for them. Whether the new station is built or not, that's something that's gonna need, have to be looked at. A lot of the CCTV cameras are approaching, you know, 15 years old. The quality of the camera's not that great. So if we have an incident or if we have a traffic incident, we may or may not get decent coverage of that area. So those need to be replaced as well. Police interview, interview room equip, equipment. When they go in to interview a, a subject or, you know, somebody making a statement, that equipment needs to be 100% reliable and that's at end of life, that needs to be replaced. EOC training room technology. I believe that's gonna be touched on by another department, but it's something that, that's very important to, to our department to make sure that when you go in there, it works. And right now, we have a system where you go in for a presentation or it may or may not work. We got a grant to do it the first time. That was great, but we need to replace it now and get it, something that's more usable for emergencies, usable for training. We use that room tremendous, a tremendous amount and it would be a better fit for all township departments if that was upgraded. The public works lower level and police cellphone radios, we need those to work. And to do that, we need bidirectional amplifiers. That's about 40 to 60K. So that when they go down there, they can be assured they're gonna get phone and they're gonna get radio service. I know there's a lot to throw at you and it's a wish list in a way, but these are all things we're doing now that if we wanna continue to do them, we need to invest in the technology. Some of the other audiovisual projects, if we go to the next slide. In general, I think Keri's gonna talk to you in length about auditorium, what they'd like to see for here. We're, we're happy to assist in that. Keri has some great ideas. But again, all over the township, we have older displays, we have in senior center, planning in the lobbies. All these were installed, for the most part, years ago. And that's one of the first things that always gets cut from budget, is things that you can kinda keep going. A lot of the stuff we've kept going. One of the final things is geographic information systems. About 12 years ago, we developed a product called Civic Site. And that is the software that's used by all the departments to do plan reviews and things like that. It's at its end of life. Its developer is literally doing me a favor by keeping it limping and Band-Aid it on. I bribe him with lunch, but it's, it's long past its life service. It's no longer supported. It's one of those things, again, that it's working, but it no longer works with new windows very well. It doesn't play nice. It's slower for the users. So that's something I'd like to just start a pilot project and start with notification, see if we can't get that, a new solution, and at least pull that critical aspect off of Civic Site. And I estimate that about 40,000. We print and update all the address maps for the township, along with any other mapping projects, from precinct maps to, I mean, pretty much any map you can think of. Those need to be replaced. Even though they're hard copy, we still do utilize those in all the police and fire vehicles. It's a great backup. It has additional information such as where the driveways are and, and things that are needed. That's only about 10 or 15,000, but it's something I think really needs to be done. Patty touched on replacing of aging multifunctional printers and copiers. That's a theme throughout the township. Again, if we could maybe strategically replace some of those, I think that would be, would be a real benefit. And I just wanna reiterate, spending money on IT benefits all the departments. Everyone relies on us for the network that they use, for the devices that they use, for the programs that they use to complete their mission tasks. So just asking for your consideration here and I'd be happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's a lot.
Next, we'll go on to, I'm gonna need this for the next one. Next, we have Jimmy Gallagher. Just gonna get ready. Police chief.
No, these people, Deputy Chief, can you help me out? He's self-appointed deputy chief though, so Darren, just so you guys know.
Yes, he's here representing the police as well.
Yeah. He comes over daily to ask about budget questions. First, thanks for giving us the opportunity, for letting us give you some recommendations for the ARPA funds. I've done this twice. We did it early on when we thought we were gonna get them and then you asked for them a second time. And one consistent theme in the police department that we came back to is the, the timing of our building. And it's really, when I say the timing of our building, it's all of our, all of us in this building, from administration to PBO. It's unfortunately, some of the things that we're discussing, whether it's with Chief Leroy, is we're putting Band-Aids on a problem. A problem that, I don't know, 10 years ago should have maybe have been addressed when we did the other buildings, but we have, the police department and the rest of this, we've outgrown this building. So a lot of the recommendations we have, it's something we need to put on our radar, whether it's this administration or down the road, something to begin the conversations of, of whether we do a public safety complex with police and fire together or something of that nature. But we, our consistent theme when we discussed this was coming back to a remodel of our, of our building again. Our last major remodel in our station was in the year 2000, late 99, 2000, when they added our Sally Port and did some remodeling of, and reorganization of the lower level downstairs. I believe that's also when they brought the police administration upstairs, which 25 years ago was probably the thing to do. That's not the management style today. That is what leads, especially a police organization. So a lot of times, we're downstairs with our troops and try, and just, you know, so we know what's going on. It works out for what we need it to do and we make it work. So we come to the first, our priority number one, which really came to light during COVID, is the size of our dispatch room. We did do a remodel in late 2019, early 2020 of that room. It was just, the consoles we had at that time were no longer being made, so the parts were no longer available to fix what we had. So it forced us to go into remodeling and getting new consoles in this, in that room. At that time, we went through over 10 different configurations just to get consoles now that will actually fit in, in the room. So currently, we have, we're currently known in our, in this region for our dispatch center. I, I don't know if, and I say it about our ladies and gentlemen in that room, I don't know if they sometimes understand the importance of their job. They do it every day, right? You just forget, it's just, you do it every single day. But I can't think of another job, but the police officers, unless they spontaneously come across a job, they can't do their job if the dispatcher doesn't do their job properly. We see it across this country when, when a mistake is made. It affects, it could be the outcome of the call in reality. So we are known for that. We are fully staffed with 13 dispatchers. Right now, we have Meg as our dispatch supervisor and 12 dispatchers. We're the first time we've been fully staffed in five years. I can tell you, we are probably the only dispatch center around right now that's probably fully dispatched. I know county at one point was down 19 dispatchers. West Bloomfield, I think, is almost at half staff, the last we knew. It may have increased a little bit. So we're very fortunate in that manner. So just a little stat for you, total calls in the dispatch, these are phone calls. In 2021 was 75,310. And year-to-date, we're at 10,177 911 calls and 34,000, almost 35,000 non-emergency lines. We currently have three workstations in there and 10, now 10 monitors per station. When I started in 2000, we had five, if that, computers at those stations. Those are our current setups as you see it now. I know those pictures are a little small. So one of the issues we have now is our room is only 20 foot by 17 foot and it's odd-shaped, so fitting things in there is a little bit of a problem. Three, three workstations, but I, but as call volumes increase, a fourth station would be necessary. I bring that to your attention because last week, we had the storm. And just real quick, I, I was leaving the station when that storm hit. I'm dispatch trained. I turned around, I was on the phone with Meg. She also turned around. So we ended up having four of us in that room, which still wasn't enough at that night. It was shift change. The other three dispatchers came on at night. I think there were seven or eight of us working in there and all had a function to do. We took, just in that storm, in, in two hours, 175 911 calls, 99 emergency calls. You're talking for two phone, two call takers at that time. Meg, I was able to sign on. I can't answer phones. Meg was answering from her desk, but she doesn't have a system where she can enter the calls. We were actually putting on a smart board the calls that Meg was taking so we could enter them in the computer system later on because we don't have that extra workstation. So we have three now. Four would be ideal. We can't fit four in the space that we have. It's, it's just not gonna happen. Obviously, I said 10 monitors. We were unable in that room to provide for any of the CDC recommended guidelines during the pandemic for spacing, social distancing, anything. Our dispatchers literally sit on top of each other, almost chair to chair at some times. We were able to configure it where we now, one of our, our dispatchers are required to watch our prisoners. They now have one station at the back is to the prisoners with monitors that they can see the prisoners, just be, just because there's no room for that. We could not configure them to fit the way they all were and with the monitors, they wouldn't be able to see over the top. Unfortunately, the scope is limited to the availability of space in that room. So we, if you go to the next slide for me. Our vision, or the current issues I went through, if you go to the next one, please. Our vision is to expand our dispatch into the adjoining command office. Doing this would require most likely an architect or someone to come in and help us get a visual of the space we have down there now and what can be reutilized or reconfigured so we can do it. Expanding dispatch could, could cost us a little more because we may have to do other alterations in the police department to get that operations to work. We have, we have the space in the command office to make the room large enough, but that would require us to command, construct a new command office. We believe we have the room there as well. Back in the day, our records division always had big records things that had been moved. So we think we can construct two offices in there for our command. And with that, our hope is at, when the opportunity presents itself, itself to expand our services to surrounding jurisdictions. We do that with Franklin. Now, it's been a huge success. And I know there's opportunity out there. Can't guarantee it, but there's opportunity that presents itself for other agencies to either combine services or for us to, to take over those departments. But that's dependent on having the availability and the space to do it. That, that window is small because they sign contracts. For example, if they're with Oakland County now, they're typically three-year contracts. Once that contract starts coming up, the year out, they start negotiating that contract. So we would have to get into that, those talks rather quickly at those times to even try to, to bring a new service in. I think we could take on another agency, similar to our size, but I don't know if we could go much larger than that. And I don't know if you want to. You start losing that culture and that feel and we see that as a problem in some of the other larger jurisdictions who have combined in workplace, overall workplace culture. We've taken a lot of dispatchers from other agencies who just, and it's actually a benefit to us because they know what their culture was like somewhere and then they see our culture, how we can build upon it. So, but that opportunity is rather, you know, but not having the space to do it, we can't even entertain the talks. If we go to the next slide, and there is a duplicate there, so go to the next one. I, I put a couple pictures on of just other dispatch centers. On the left, you'll see Waterford's updated center and how large of a room it is and how many councils they have. I believe they have five workstations, Meg. And ours is in the middle, if you can't see the difference between those. And then Troy's is on the right. Troy wants to add another one or two workstations in theirs as they're seeing the same issues. They're just, their call for service volume is increasing as well, but you can see the difference in the sizing. One bad part of the thing about our dispatch center and the way our, our station's designed based on our dispatchers watching our prisoners, they have no outdoor light, but through lined glass at our front desk. glass at our front desk. If you sat in that room and dealt with the calls they deal with, a little sunshine once in a while wouldn't be a bad thing. So those are just comparative to show why our center's a little bit more of a priority for us and why we're bringing that about. Which then takes us to our locker rooms. Our locker rooms, I thought, were remodeled when we did it in 2000. That is not the case. Most of our officers who have been here for over 30 years said they're the exact same way. Obviously, technology's changed for that. Several lockers are in need of repair, and for the men's locker room. In the females' locker room, we have one locker space available right now. If we hire another female, we'll be out of locker room space for any of the other females. So we are, and we're landlocked in that room. Again, that's why when I talk about the availability of space and redesigning or reconfiguring, we would need that expert to come in and kind of help us, you know, go through that. The female locker room right now, it was one bathroom stall and one shower, and we now, when that was built, I think we had three or four females total in the department. We're up to 20-something now with our records, dispatch, and female officers on the road. Again, that would require us to construct a new commands office, and then there's lack of ventilation in both those rooms, especially the female locker room. The female locker room is, like I said, becoming a major problem for us. I estimate, and again, this is a pure estimation, it would take an expert to come in, probably 750 to a million for this type of project, to reconfigure the areas that may need to be downstairs. With that, if you look back, and we don't need to, but those other areas in those dispatch centers from Troy and Waterford, they have an entire wall of TV cameras. We, you know, they can tap into their local school district live feeds. They have sign-ins in there that, we lack the technology in our dispatch center. We can be a lot better in that area, and we want to be best-in-class for that. So I think a state-of-the-art dispatch center is needed around here. Some of the future needs. When we talk about future needs, again, we've requested things in the years past, but unfortunately, with budgets, we have to cut things out. One of the things that would be advantage to us is there's a MiloTheaters training system. One of the benefits of this is it's an interactive training system that would supplement our reality-based training we do. This would not be a replacement for that. But the more training and the more decision-making, the more real-life scenarios we can put our guys into, even on a shift level on a daily basis, is only going to make them better officers on the street and make the right decisions on the street. This type of system is controlled by one trainer, and there's 900 different scenarios they can present, and based on the officer's actions, that trainer can do things. If the officer's going to have terrible officer safety, they can have somebody walk up behind with an edged weapon. If they're treating the person, you know, if they're talking to somebody bad, they can play the outcomes based on some of that. It's, I hate to say, it's almost like a virtual reality, a video game Brian and I talked about one day, but the advantage also would be in hiring. We could do oral boards, you know, and do interviews. We can take them down and give them scenarios and see how their decision-making is going to be right on scene. Community events, you know, something like this. We could walk our community board, I know the fire department does their thing, we could walk you through our citizens academy, through life, shoot, don't shoot, you know, what it's like to deal with somebody in a mental health crisis, and give them a reality on what the officer on the street every day faces. So again, the technology upgrades. We just bought a smartboard for our dispatch center. It's amazing. That a $4,000, $4,500 piece of equipment makes a huge difference in a room. We utilized it greatly the other day during the storm. Our traffic equipment, hopefully, we're bringing our traffic unit back, and our accident investigation equipment as well. We don't even have it anymore. We had a bad accident on Telegraph, I would say, within this last month. Troy is one of the agencies that has what they call the total station, a GPS mapping station. Theirs was down. It took three hours for somebody to come with one. Telegraph was shut down. It was during rush hour on a, I think, four, five hours? Five hours. They have to go back the old-school way of pulling tape across the roadway, which really slows things down. That is about $26,000. And then one thing we got rid of several years ago, which is a little bit different now, are the radar trailers that go in neighborhoods. Those things now can put message boards up. They're not cheap. They're, you know, anywhere up to about $20,000 apiece, but a lot, we went to the portable signs that go on street poles or speed limit sign poles, but we're finding in most of our neighborhoods, we don't have signs. And what we do, they're stop signs. So we're putting them on stop signs when people are already decelerating. I know, I'll give you an example on Lincoln. Lincoln, we just deployed one recently. The neighbors are complaining about the traffic and the speeds on Lincoln, and Nick put those up, and it confirmed their concerns. They have legitimate speeding concerns on Lincoln. That helps us direct our patrols. But I'm sure you've gone through other jurisdictions and seen those trailers. We can put them in front of one person's house, you know, for a given period of time. Our jail facility, we won't touch on that, because we already did. Whether or not we want to look at electric vehicles in the future, that I think is something that's coming, but charging stations for that, and I have no idea the cost of something like that. License plate readers are the new big thing. Many agencies have them. They are very, very useful. They're about $2,500 per camera. Most of them can cover two lanes, but that's a reoccurring cost. That's a yearly subscription. The nice part about those is whoever has license, if you own the license plate cameras or have them in your jurisdiction, you have access to every jurisdiction's license plate cameras that have them. They have solved many of our crimes around here. And then, one of the other things are solar panel digital speed signs. This came up. Birmingham has several of them in their jurisdiction. I know most one that people comment to us about is on Maple, just west of Southfield. And again, that gives us the same data that NIX would, that they put out, and we've had several of our residents ask us about putting those types of things in school zones. They're solar panel. I don't know too much about them, but I did get the actual quote from Birmingham. I think overall, with the installation, they were close to $3,500, $3,800 then, so I'm guessing about $4,000 now in that. So those are our kind of immediate needs, and I'll take any questions if anybody has any.
One thing to kind of loop, all of you have been kind of talking about the public safety station or complex. Just to give an idea, what that came about is, there was a grant that we could, if we had plans, so even if this is something that ARPA doesn't go with, if you had plans and you had an idea and you already owned the land, we could have gotten up to $5 million. Because we had no plan, we were just starting a plan, we couldn't apply. So knowing that certain legislators in our area are a little more aggressive at giving large grants for building facilities like this, that's why we started looking into it. Our EOC is in a bunker, basically, down in the lower area that gets really bad cell reception. It's kind of the worst place you could pick for an EOC. So it would be a mixture of moving the police over so we could have gender equity. I know from a recruiting standpoint, it is not pleasant when a female comes in and sees that she's going to get a curtain to protect her while changing. It's a little out of date compared to others, but it's a chance to bring in some equity. It's a chance to get new technology and safety. And another one is to bring that EOC, because if, God forbid, it's a tornado instead of straight-line winds, or there is a school shooting, or there is something, our EOC is working right now, but it is not the best place and safest place to have. And that way, it's kind of keeping everybody in one area also. So that's kind of where that came from. And if we even get the plans going, if that grant comes up in another two years, we could then apply, and there are very few people that were ready, so very few applied, so.
I think it's a time, and I mean, interrupt. I think it's a time to look at it. And if you go around, and you know, John and I have talked greatly about it, ideally, and one of the benefits to Bloomfield Township is, the other day during the storm, John texted me, he's like, "You in dispatch?" Yep, I'm on my way. When DPW came in, they came right to dispatch, and you know, everybody was, it's just what we do. When we had the scare at the Blue Point, you know, everyone steps up and does what needs to be done, and we don't, we just don't have the facilities for that. And it's not anybody's fault, it's just, we realized when those situ, we plan for the worst, right? When we have to have the equipment for the worst. Hopefully, we ever use it. We can just tout it. But if we, if we're not prepared, that's where we run into our problems. So and just one thing to add real quick is, we call it the penthouse. I don't know if that's what everyone calls it, but the penthouse upstairs is where all of our dispatch equipment is at. So upstairs, on the roof line, where the water would come in, the first place it's going to leak, is where all of our radio equipment, all of our phones, all of everything that operates dispatch, that's running from up there, probably the furthest part from the dispatch center, all the way to dispatch. It presents a lot of problems. When we need something quick, it takes, it may take IT two weeks to get us to where we need to be to handle that. So just little things like that, that we need to get on the radar for, whether it's during our time, but at least we're prepared.
Right. And the EOC, for those that aren't as familiar, that's the emergency operations. It's more than just police and fire. It's where every department has a representative, because during a storm, you have DPW, you have, you know, you have cable, you have, every single department has an action. They have a person who's trained. We're all going through training right now so that we're ready when something happens. And when we went through our training process, the room that we were in wasn't conducive to even the model. So even knowing it wasn't an emergency, it still wasn't even, we couldn't do what we needed to do. So as we're continuing those trainings, we're finding what we're missing, and we were able to get a grant for, or we're about to finalize it. Once it gets final vote, that we can at least get the technology we need. So no matter where it's going to be, we're upgrading and getting soul, so that people don't have to remember to bring their laptop. There will be a laptop that's specific to each position that needs to be there. So that was a grant that we did apply for. We just couldn't apply for the big grant for the whole building, so this will help us.
And ideally, in that, we'll put a dispatch council as well. And then, we're one of the, I don't know how many agencies, John, you might be able to help me out on that, but we're an actual state-certified emergency operations center. So we're fully funded on our own, am I correct?
We're 104 in Oakland County.
We're 104 in Oakland County. That is actually a certified EOC. That must be maintained at that level. So if something were to go bad in another jurisdiction, they should very well reach out to us and say, "Can we come there?" So.
That's kind of, if you're wondering where that came from.
Jim, you said that the dispatch has to watch the prisoners. I assume that's not statutory or, it's just, we don't have anybody else to watch them, right?
Correct. We would have a police officer have to be in the station.
If we reconfigure dispatch so that they weren't able to see them, so we could give them sunlight or whatever, we would need somebody else to watch the prisoners.
Correct. And that's why moving them from that location is, you know, possible. And I don't think you want to do that via only camera. I'm not saying a couple dispatchers can't see if they're sitting further away, but you want, each council has the prisoner cameras on so that we can see if there's an incident going on, they can glance, and then they'll alert one of us to, you know, in the station to go check on a prisoner. But you still want to have that at times. Every, what is it, every half hour, we visually 100% inspect them, and then usually about every hour, we actually walk through the jail cell blocks. Not a dispatcher, an officer, or somebody in the station. So unfortunately, moving them out of that room is next to impossible at this point.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thanks, we'll go on to the next one. Next, we have a tag team coming up here. We have our DPW and, so we have our director Noah Maholsky and our director Olivia Olson-Budger.
All right, so we'll get started here. So a couple things I want to point out. I think it's unique, these projects that we're proposing, for a few reasons. We can reach the population, I think, more than a lot of other things. When I say that, I mean, you know, there's 10,800 residential customers. That's households, so you times that by three or four people per household, and you get oh, 32,000 people, right, that we can directly impact. They're one-time projects. They are defects within our township sewer system. Once they're fixed, there won't be any ongoing costs with these projects. I think that benefits are threefold. Obviously, it benefits our system by removing defects from the system. It benefits the customers, because if we don't fund these with either general fund or ARPA funds, the funding will either come from bonds, which will go onto the rates, or will come directly from the rates, which go to the customers. And there's an environmental impact to not having sewers failed. I think we can all agree on that, although that's less of a quantifiable impact, but I think it's one that's important. And I think it's unique in the way that we can solve a problem for the system, for the township, but we can also impact directly the pocketbooks of these residents that are part of the system. So again, once we get to the funding side, if we don't fund these through general fund or bond, well, even bonds will go on the rates. It's the only way that if we use ARPA funds, we don't have to raise rates, and you're directly impacting the pocketbooks of the residents. So I think that's important. So these are, so once we started with the SAW grant that EEST got, and you start to look at sewers, you begin to find defects within those sewers. And once you find these defects, we're required to make improvements to the sewers, or else we're liable for those defects. If they were indeed, you know, like in a reasonable amount of time, were indeed to fail, we would have some liability there, or at least it would be debatable whether we would have liability there. So kind of digging into them a little bit, Forest Lake Country Club, we replaced a section of sewer, 2010 timeframe, right around there. It's down by the lake, out in front of the current tennis courts. In fact, it goes under the tennis courts, but the portion we replaced in earlier was a failed section. The part rate downstream of that failed section has now failed too. So costly, again, because it's right near a lake, because it's under a tennis court, it's an arsement, but it's going to be a difficult project. Likewise, there's a sewer discovered under Club Drive that is fail or is failing, so that will require work. Braverton, Olivia might be able to explain a little bit more, but again, a section of failed sewer. Woodward and Square Lake, that's the, they're coming in and doing Square Lake Road in two years. MDOT is planning it right now and doing the initial plans for it. As part of that, we went in and looked at our sewers underneath to make sure they were good prior to MDOT doing this work, and we found some defects there that we're going to correct when MDOT has Square Lake Road shut down. We need to shut the road down to make the repairs, so it makes sense to not shut Square Lake Road down on our own account and utilize the traffic management and that type of stuff that Oakland County, or that MDOT will have out there. Oakland County's cap program with their sewer, we pay on an ongoing basis for this. Their original estimate was like $6 million worth of charges. That doubled recently, but that's the work that Oakland County's doing on behalf of us to maintain the greater sewer system here within the township. That's already included in the rates, but the price is going up significantly. So that's why that one is a major concern and a major factor for the rates. You have anything to add about those?
Well, just that, the first four projects listed on the slide are Bloomfield Township-owned sanitary sewers, and like Noah said, we have to address these issues. The first two comparably are similar to the Porter's Lane and the Long Lake Road sewer replacements that are occurring. They are, they do need to be addressed. Construction schedule looking at next year, 2023. Design time is significant. Braverton Road is a section of sanitary sewer that actually runs in the backyards under a pond, wetland area. This area was discovered by DPW. The sewer has sunk, and we cannot access it. We cannot rehabilitate it from doing in-situ rehabilitation, which is what we prefer. We cannot do that method, so it is a significant project, because it is in the backyards. Access is difficult. It's in, it's under a pond, and it's in a very wet area. And then Woodward and Square Lake, MDOT will be reconstructing the section of Square Lake from Woodward to the business, to the interchange, up to 75, and significant cost savings if we add those sewer projects to be incorporated with them. In fact, HRC is the design consultant for MDOT on this, on MDOT's project, so we've already asked MDOT slash HRC to incorporate us, because again, the cost savings for traffic control alone is significant for those projects. And so, and then like Noah said, the Oakland County cap program, if you recall, Commissioner Nash came and spoke to the board a couple weeks ago about that project, and so you're aware of that. The good news is that, as I, we did provide a memo giving a lot of detail on all these projects and potential funding mechanisms and what those impacts to the rates are. The good news is that the Oakland County Water Resource Commissioner's Office was made aware that they did receive, they did place number three on the Clean Water SRF State Program, and also received a $12 million grant. And the project, if you recall, I think it's like $170 million, so 12 million's a lot of money, but it's overall in the whole scope of things, but it does decrease the township's costs slightly. So that was a benefit to the overall project that we just learned about last week.
And then the memos are mixed in here now, too, and then those are part of the minutes that'll go out.
So. So. Um, so.
out of the cave with the ball coming behind him, you know, the big stone rolling downhill coming behind him. We have to address these issues. The ball appears to be getting bigger as it comes towards us, and there's a few different ways we can fund them, right? So we could do a general fund allotment. We can utilize these ARPA funds. We can do the work outright and just plop the cost on the ready-to-serve portion of the rate, which, you know, would be an astronomical increase. I think it was, figuring out it was $32 per MEU per quarter. So very, it's in the memo. It's a big number, right? So additionally, we're, we could bond this, right? And there's a couple of options there. There's the state revolving fund, the Clean Water Revolving Fund. We're not a, seen as a high scoring applicant for that, both because we don't have a problem with lead, and we are of a community with a lot more resources. So the state doesn't look fondly upon giving us that money and that funding. So it would come down to a general bond sale that would then be plopped on that MEU calculation, two to $4. So you see it. If we bonded it, splits that over a 20-year period, so that brings down that cost significantly over one year. And again, the ARPA funding, just to kind of roll it back. Again, my feeling here is that we can, it's politically a win because we can actually impact the dollar amounts coming out of residents' pockets, the benefits from environmental that reaches everyone to the system, which is really everyone at the township, too, because even if you're not a resident that utilizes the system, the liability for that system failing is still on all the residents. So I think that's important to consider. And, you know, these are packaged projects that we can get done within the timeframe of ARPA.
And one thing I want to make sure it's clear in the memo, there is a discussion on methods of funding for the four township-owned projects. And then separate in the memo is the regional cap projects. So the third bullet here says a township bond sale. That's just for the $4 million in township projects, not the township's obligation for the regional projects.
So our intent was to lay out these things that we've been seeing as they've been looking in the sewers, both my staff and the contracted staff here. Make you aware, you know, we've got to address these either way, and then talk you through what we believe the impacts of each one of these different rate mechanisms are.
Do you have any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go on to the next one. We have senior services. We have our director Christine Tavaro.
Hello. I think this is supposed to go on there. All right. So that's a tough act to follow, as are all the requests from the departments, exceptionally worthy, of course. So I'll just be very brief. We all know that we have enhanced longevity and, of course, aging and place preferences, which means our township residents age 50-plus will continue to grow. And recently, we talked about CMCOG statistics that show 41% of households have someone aged 65 or better. One of the things that came to mind when we were asked to look at what our needs are and/or dream is that increased outdoor programming space would add to our ability to serve and provide service to a growing number of seniors, and also maintain programs in uncertain times, as we all experienced in 2020 and 2021. When we look for, when Bloomfield Township Senior Services looks for grants in our industry, we're generally not eligible because we are not a 501(c)(3). We don't have that tax status. And it is sometimes or often based on need in the community, and that might be, you know, the number of underserved people by income, by race or nationality. So we don't often fit into the areas that would make us a good candidate for grants. So I need support that comes from this decision process. And I think what Danny has often said is, this is just the start. So I realize this is a limited pool of money, but now we're all on the same page, looking for more and more as the years go by. So I appreciate that. Some of the projects listed on our slides are either-or decisions, as space on our property is limited. So it's funny, I had the parking lot repaving listed under modest projects, which is a bit ridiculous, I realize. It should have said essential project, because that's the one project that we know has to happen. And Noah and his team have provided some information, and there was an outside contractor. So at some point, that parking lot is going to fail, so we're going to need to do something in the next couple of years. That is estimated to be a million dollars. Everything else, I would say, is modest compared to what we've seen, of course, discussed so far. So something that has been popular in a couple of other area senior centers is outdoor fitness equipment. And you may see some of it on sometimes nature trails or fitness trails may have them. I've seen them in Florida. So that's something that would be fairly reasonable to do, and we believe that there is some spacing for that, and that might be about $64,000. There would have to be some sidewalk upgrades to gain access to it, $16,000. The other thing that we've talked about is either a freestanding pavilion or possibly permanent awnings going off the back of the building, which is the south overlooking the lake. We have some already, some nice patios there, but having that awning would allow for multi-seasonal use of that space. And let's see, a couple of other things that relate to awareness of the senior center would be a more visible sign at the Andover Road entrance, and then a fairly small project, signage at Telegraph and Andover Road, where people are, you know, I don't know how many millions of, not millions, tens of thousands of cars pass through there. And that would be really nice to have something saying that Bloomfield Township Senior Center exists, and by the way, you can access it by coming up Andover Road. So that's what we have. And of course, the really, really big, big dream, large-scale projects, which some of our advisory council members probably have talked to you about through the years, is they always wish for a larger pool, something, you know, it was originally Olympic size, and then, of course, with budget and that sort of thing, we got smaller and smaller. So it's about half the size of an Olympic pool. The locker rooms can get very, very packed at certain times during the day. And then also, the most demand that we have for is fitness, and so a secondary fitness studio or an expanded fitness studio. The original design was for a gymnasium, which would allow for pickleball, one of the hottest things going in the senior field, and some other opportunities like volleyball and basketball. So those are the big scale projects. And although I just really want to say that any kind of large-scale development like that would certainly require the board to look at what would be the maintenance costs, what would be the staffing costs, because it couldn't be done with our current level of staffing and funding. And then a parking study would be really important, because prior to the pandemic, we did have some peak periods where parking was really at a premium. And so expansion would, of course, require, excuse me, more parking of some nature. So that's all I have. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Any questions? Next, we have Cable and Community Relations. We have our director, Carrie Wasat.
Thank you. And I would just like to invite anybody that hasn't been over to the Cable Building recently to come by and stop and say hello and see me and get a tour. We do have torn curtains and peeling wallpaper and aging equipment, and we've heard a lot about technology, aging technology, and the need for new, for updates throughout the township. And I didn't ask for anything for the Cable Building because I really, because of the, where the funds are coming from, from ARPA, and the reason behind, you know, when the pandemic happened, people stopped coming to the studios, and they haven't really returned yet. And so we've been doing more virtual meetings, and we have a new studio, which you are all sitting in right now. This auditorium, with the, meaning of more meetings coming into the auditorium, we've increased the use of this space four times, when the trustees' meetings were the only ones happening with the onset of doing things virtually. Other meetings were added, zoding, planning, lake board. This room has been used a lot more. And so what I'm asking for is my priority, $125,000, to upgrade the systems to this room. I guess there is a little overlap, but I thought this was really important because a lot of the projects are behind the scenes. This is something that our residents are really going to see by providing the best possible broadcast and digital experience for them to see these meetings. The thing that you would really notice yourselves additionally to the cameras and audio would be, instead of having the projection system, we would add two 98-inch digital displays that would create a really great experience. So that's all I ask for. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Yes.
So you guys were taking it all in to ask questions again. So first, I just want to say thank you to all the department heads who were able to come today. And I think we had all except one, which is awesome. And thank you also to the board members. I know it's a lot to sit through and take in all at once. I figure we put this on slides so you can kind of take it in, and we'll, you know, have probably more questions at the second one. And also to remind everyone that we're going to be doing more, but I wanted to open it up to if you already have ideas you want to add, if you have more questions. We kind of have all the experts sitting here in front of us, so this is your study session so you can.
Did you say there's going to be another study session?
We're going to have a few, because I assume you all have ideas. I figured we are taking ideas from the departments, take some ideas from the trustees and the administration, and kind of start to narrow things down, you know, kind of look so that we know who we send on the hunt to see, how much will this actually cost? You know, a lot of these are estimates based on some initial phone calls, because if somebody isn't picked, if theirs isn't picked, we don't want them delving too deep. So it'll kind of be narrowing it down, and then when we narrow it down to a certain list, then we're going to need to involve the public and say, these are kind of what we're thinking as a top. What do you guys think? To see, because it's technically their funds, too. So I'm guessing there's going to be at least two, possibly three more, or two plus a survey going out. One of the ways that I'm trying to figure out to actually hit our residents, and not just the ones that are maybe on next door elsewhere that aren't even our residents that talk about us, is actually doing emailing like they did once before. They actually sent a survey to every single household prepaid, so that it came back. There's one vote for household. It's not like somebody can have, I have seven different emails. So if you do an email survey, I could vote seven times. So it kind of keeps it more realistic, and you know they're the actual residents. So once we narrow it down, we could look at the cost of actually doing that kind of a survey. But again, this is us as a group, this is our first time as a group getting to even discuss this kind of stuff. So it's a little loosey-goosey today, because I wasn't sure what questions you guys would have, or what suggestions you might have. Anybody want to start?
Well, I'll just say, I mean, it was really helpful to hear from everybody and hear about the things that, the needs, really. I mean, a lot of them sound like they're needs and things that we'll probably have to end up doing one way or the other. So it was just helpful for me to kind of get a bird's eye view of what's going on at the township. So I just want to say thank you again to everybody.
Do you have any initial ones that you want to add in for people to think about?
The only thing that I thought of as Carrie was talking is just as far as like a communication app with residents. So I know, like, I think Birmingham recently started doing that, and I wasn't sure if you thought that would be something maybe we should look into.
It's actually a priority for me, and we will be able to fund it. So it's just, I'm getting my three kids right now.
Great.
Maybe not by the end of the year, but very soon.
Awesome.
The good news is we can do it under our current funding. So there are some things that aren't before you, because we actually are able to cover the costs. These are more the ones that are above that. But yeah, that's, she's already started doing some, some good things for that. So you've already got support on one.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I think we've talked about that in the past, about having an app where people could take pictures and report things and know what's going on with our meetings and everything. So I think that's, that's a good thing. I'm glad that we're addressing that. I guess my, I'll just talk since I'm talking. You know, in hearing everything, it seems like we can either do a couple of really big things, or a bunch of really small things, not to say that they're unimportant, like new printers and scanners and switches for IT and things like that, things that need to happen, versus a $2 million sewer project or something like that, or, you know, a $1.7 million ladder truck. So, you know, I have some thoughts, you know, I'm just, I'm taking everything in, but that to me is really what jumped out, is that there's some really big things and a lot of little things. And, you know, I'm glad we're going to reach out for feedback to the community because, you know, we should, you know, the federal government in their infinite wisdom thought it'd be beneficial for everyone to have this money, so we better do something good with it.
And Christine pointed out, and what you pointed out, too, both of you, is these are needs, whether we do it with ARPA or not. We also just needed one spot to bring it all together. So a lot of this, we all knew that this is obviously more than $4 million in needs. But then when another grant application comes up where we've already kind of started to vet something out, that one you had to be shovel-ready. And we were so close, because we had the land, we had the idea, but you had to have at least talked about it at a board level, and that kind of knocked us out. So some of this is just to put our eyes on, on when we see different grants coming our way, too. You want to go next?
I think it was a great presentation by everybody. And it's nice, both for the, you know, the ARPA possibilities and goals and priority lists, but also just to see what everybody's looking for in as far as needs for the long term, that may be unrelated to the ARPA money, but still needs for the community, specifically, you know, what Jimmy was talking about, and Patty, and I'm sure John, too, because consolidating some, I don't know, the services, but working together on the space in a project like that, and the same with Patty's department. So long-term needs that we certainly need to discuss more in the future, and certainly, as you mentioned, Danny, being, having the opportunity with them on the drawing board to be able to apply for future grants. So all of those are important. Certainly don't have any suggestions yet at this point, as far as what's the most important, but it was good to hear everything, and certainly when we get more feedback from the community, I'm certain that the board will have discussion as far as what's most important, as far as the larger projects, the medium projects, and basically what's most important for the community.
Well, I really appreciated all of the input, and I wish there was more money. There's so many really important things that you touched on, public safety, communication, IT, and it all just kind of also comes together, because you need that communication for police and fire, and you need that communication for the building department and, you know, senior center, and IT is right in the middle of that, too. But, and some of just the straight-out public safety issues, it's going to take a lot of thinking, and it's also good to have these projects, like Danny said, grant money comes along, you know, we can shuttle that project and split it with grant money, and then there would be money to apply to another one. And Michael's point, you know, some of them are big and some of them are small. It would be nice to do a combination of both, take a couple of big items and try and help them out, and then also share some of it to the most important, smaller items, too, and not just say, well, we're going to hit two big items, and that's that. Really a lot of good, a lot of good things presented. Thank you.
Oh, sure. Happy to. I have a couple of thoughts in different categories. I put just a quick pen to paper, and I know I haven't got the math right, but my quick numbers came up with, you know, easily somewhere around $42 million worth of projects. And I want to echo what's been mentioned before, there's, you know, just a plethora of amazing things here. The township has always been great on expense management, and it's always been great on keeping taxes to the minimum. But after a while, the bills come due, and I think this is a really great example of things where, you know, the community and the needs have outpaced some of the infrastructure. The buildings are aging, the maintenance has been deferred, upgrades have been deferred, and all of these things, many, many of these things really need some, some action in the near term. An idea I have would The township has always been great on expense management, and it's always been great on keeping taxes to the minimum. But after a while, the bills come due, and I think this is a really great example of things where, you know, the community and the needs have outpaced some of the infrastructure. The buildings are aging, the maintenance has been deferred, upgrades have been deferred, and all of these things, many, many of these things really need some, some action in the near term. An idea I have would be that we would perhaps prepare like a list of criteria versus identifying maybe my favorite project, electric cars, or, or an area, water and sewer, but instead maybe come up with some criteria that we, you know, rank. Maybe the criteria, first one, of course, is it's eligible. Another one might be, you know, does it reduce tax liability for the residents? Another one might be, does it have long-term cost savings for the township over a period of time? Another one could be, you know, can we define a direct resident impact? And then kind of use these criteria to measure against all the different kinds of ideas that we see so that we're trying to have a, bring some object, object measurement is still subjective, and it'll always be subjective, but some sort of objective measurement to the whole process. And so that was, was thinking, as I was thinking about all of these different things and how we might come to a spot on them, that might be one tool we could use as a group. That's what I was thinking.
I think, I guess, I like the concept of a strategic plan because a lot of what we're talking about here comes down to what is our strategy and how do we want to execute that? And to really stay on point, I think that's probably first and foremost. Jimmy mentioned being best-in-class, and if that is what our philosophy is going to be as a community, then we need to really look at, we need to, number one, say that that's our philosophy and have a strategy of how to execute it. A number, my sense is, we're probably via ARPA bonding, water rates, or taxes, or just the general budget, we're going to be buying and implementing, I think, a good portion of the items that were, that are on this list. The question is how we're going to do it and when we're going to do it. And so I like Martin's thought of having some objective criteria that we're going to try to come to so we can come to, so that we can make a decision. My sense is that this is a bucket of money and that it would, to me, I think residents are going to want to know what did we spend the money on? What did we do with it? And it's difficult to say that we did it in three dozen different 10 to 15, $20,000 tranches. I think it needs to be something that has real impact. Unfortunately, the items that really have significant impact are multiples of what this budget, what these dollars are. Again, though, with a strategic plan, we, I think, will get from here to there, but I think we really have to start probably with that as a basis. And the timeline is a little difficult because it does take time to do a good strategic plan and then still contract and spend these dollars. But if we, I think we'll, we'll be able to do both, but I think they're all, they're both important. And I guess I would like to suggest that part of the criteria is that the money wouldn't be for items that are reoccurring. So for, and/or replacing items that have aged that I would think should be part of our normal operating budget. And then the question is, how are we going to get from here to there in operations? But we really, I think, do have some different buckets here. And that's a little bit of, I guess, my thinking on how I would divide, discern some of that.
My head was spinning when they started turning these in, and I, and I get to hear about this all year, so that's why I wanted one spot. Like you said, I think we will get to all these eventually. It won't all be ARPA, obviously, because as you pointed out, it's about 10 times the amount of what we need. But there are so many great suggestions, and there are some duplicates where they, when they come together, you know, it's listed in a couple of areas, so that'll help. But yeah, the big thing is, is I didn't want to lead and say, this is what I want, will you vote for it? I really want, this group has been so great at figuring things out together that that's why I really wanted to kind of bring them to you and say, this is what we see on a daily basis. I know, for example, I had reached out already to Patty because, you know, you get calls of, all these people are living in their home and they're complaining, they want their permits faster. What can we do? Technology. Well, technically, that's also Gail. So now we're talking to Patty and Gail. And then it's, okay, well, now what about the safety of it? Now you're talking to the fire marshal. And it's amazing how intertwined just one simple discussion becomes, all of a sudden I've got four or five department heads. So what's nice is, even though these may sound like individual needs, they're going to help a lot of different areas. I know this was a lot to take in, and you just got it today, so I didn't expect any decisions made, but I do like that you guys are talking about narrowing down the scope. So maybe we can, maybe I'll agree on some criteria that we'll think about, and so maybe we could come back in the next one and say, these are some of the ideas maybe we need some bids and some more information on, based on, you know, I think this is, you know, what Brian is saying and what Martin is saying, you guys have come up with some good criteria. So do we want to go ahead? And again, this is our meeting as a group, so I'm not going to force anything on anyone, but do you want to go ahead and come up with some criteria tonight to think about so that we can come back with some ideas at the next one?
Yeah, I mean, I think what, yeah, what they already said is, sounded really good to me.
I will say that all of these do technically, I know your first point was, is it eligible? That's why we went for the cost recovery, which we did, which gave us the most leniency. Some of the other, there are technically four buckets of where you can use money. There's another one, it has to be specific to a pandemic, you have to prove how much is, so the other three buckets were very, there are formulas involved, there's all these other issues. This was, we lost a certain amount of revenue, it's less than 10 million, so we can use this however it best affects services. So luckily, number one, we're good. They, they all had to get rid of any that didn't technically fit. What was your second one?
Well, the other, the other ones I was just thinking of as I sat here was the resident impact, you know, could we identify or quantify that? There's safety, there's fire, there's sewer and water, those all have resident impacts, but if we can kind of think about them. Cost savings to the township, that goes over years. Some investments are open to that possibility. The other was things that might reduce the tax liability or the enterprise fund liability for water and sewer. I mean, I think that's an important criteria that we might want to look at.
I think it'd be also.
Probably many others.
I think it'd be helpful, as we narrow this down, to know, there was a lot of wonderful things, and like Brian said, we're going to eventually be doing a lot of them anyway. How many of these are already, 50% of that's already in the budget for this year, and, you know, this one's already earmarked to be covered first quarter next year, and to see how much of this is already being managed. Not that we can't, you know, re-appropriate, but how much of it is already managed, how much, you know, to kind of prioritize the need. You know, if the need is high, but we already know that's funded, well, you know, then that's good to know and take that into the decision. You know, but if something is, some of the points that have been brought up are not kind of being watched already and not already being partially, you know, saved for, budgeted for, that to me would make it a higher priority if it's something that, you know, we're totally missing and we don't have funding down the line.
Well, in other words, along with that, Bill, getting back to what you said, Brian, if it's a reoccurring cost, something that's going to have to be replaced anyway, I think you need to look at that, and maybe that would reduce the priority of that expense or, or that wish.
And I like the way you phrase it of, you know, we should be figuring out how to deal with all of these on our operating budget as is, so that they're, they're already important and we should already be doing it. So your comment about when somebody says, what did you do with ARPA? It would make sense of saying, well, this was something we couldn't have, and it wasn't something that we already had, so look what we gave, as opposed to me finding ways in our budget to get you all of what you needed. This also helps to hear, because when you do get the budget for the next year and we have some things on there, you'll kind of already know what they've been talking about. So some of this is, if it is things that are already in the budget, it'll at least be something you've seen. But that's a good point to take those.
I think along with that, you mentioned the budget. I think another way to look at it is, for a particular item, is there an alternative mechanism to fund it that's feasible and makes sense? So for example, you know, and I'm just picking, I'm just going to pick on the sewer projects for a second, we could bond those. That's an alternative mechanism that we have already. And, but, you know, would we bond? So let's say that's $2 million, and let's say the dispatch center is $2 million hypothetically, dispatch and the other things for the police. Could we, we couldn't bond that. We don't have an easy way to bond that because it's not a specific discrete project, like a sewer project, that we could. So I think one way of analyzing, you know, do we have alternatives to fund something would be one way, would be another way to discriminate between the projects. You know, and then the other thing that a couple of you have mentioned about, it sounds to me, again, you know, just from what I'm hearing, that people are gravitating towards, hey, let's pick a few big items so that we can set out a press release, said this is what we spent our ARPA funds on. You know, I'm actually of the other mind on that. I would, I, to me, I think it's easier to say, we need to make a, you know, whether it's, you know, some other funding mechanism, whatever, to do a big thing like a sewer project or a expansion of the police department. But a lot of the IT things that are just not sexy or even, maybe not even all that understood by people, but are critical to what we do, you know, okay, Gail, you know, you know, just, again, that's an example of, some of these are some of the things that Chief Leroy said, you know, the jaws of life, and, you know, having gone through the fire department training and seeing the importance of those devices and that they're $40,000, so, you know, could we, I think it's easier to say, hey, we spent our money on 25 things that were important, critical things, and, you know, so I'm of the different mind. I hear some people here saying, let's focus on one or two big things, but.
Being in modern, I'm kind of in the middle.
I'm actually, I'm actually more of like, I think that it's just as powerful to put out a press release to say, we spent $4 million on 40 projects that we needed to do, you know, the scanners for Patty, right? People constantly, I mean, I hear it from people saying, how long does it take to get a building permit? Well, let's spend $4,000 and get them two scanners, and, you know, that, I mean, that will, you know, that comes back to what Martin said about, you know, impact to the taxpayer and, and being able to perform better services. So, you know, I'm of the mind, let's do a whole bunch of little things and use alternative means for some of the bigger things. But, you know, obviously, we need to do these things. Obviously, the sewer projects, they need to happen, we need to find a way to fund them. The dispatch center, you know, we need to be best-in-class, we need to find a way to fix that. Obviously, the things about, you know, we're not providing a quality experience for our female firefighters and police officers. We need to do something about that. Fire Station 3, we need to do something about, so like, we need to do something about this, and we'll need to brainstorm ways to fund it, you know, but that's sort of my take on it.
I'm kind of in the middle of, oh, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, Danny, fifth. Now, I don't think we need to do just one or two big projects. I think we can do both. And I agree with you that some of these smaller projects are very affordable, but, but really increase efficiency in the case of, for example, Patty's department, safety as far as jaws of life, and none of them are really, in the overall scheme, a thing that, that expensive. So we can do a number of those because they do increase efficiency, customer service, some for safety, and at the same time, look at some of the larger projects that may be important, again, for safety, efficiency, possibly just to make sure that the infrastructure underground is going to not fail. So I need, I think we can look at all of those.
Yeah. And to be honest, I'll just admit that Patty's is one of the ones I really wanted done because that's the most calls that I get on is the frustration, because they're sitting in the house that they're frustrated about. So you get the calls and like, oh, gosh, I want this, and it's no fault of that department that they're paper-based, because we've never had an influx of money to get the technology they need to become technology-based. And even, you know, when, when we added the paying by a credit card, it sounds so simple, but that one thing helped tremendously. So that's where a lot of this started, too, when I said, you know, one meeting led to the next, to the next, where it was, okay, you all give me your ideas, because if you could, if you could take in the calls that we take, it's usually the frustration is, and again, this isn't against you and your staff, Patty, this is lack of technology. And then, you know, Gail trying to provide the technology to her, where the software that, like, you're talking about software that's not even developed anymore and isn't supported anymore. Well, Patty needs the newer stuff, so it's a mixture of all that. So I would not assume that all of us want just big, because there's a lot of the little that needs to happen, but to your point, there's some that can be bonded, but there might be one big one that we just have no other way. So that's why we need to look and figure out what we can do, and then also to figure out what's important to all six of you as well. You know, when you think about these, and I can put these, we won't be able to discuss it, but I'll just put the information of, like, think about this and maybe come back with, like, come back with your top 10 so I can have them start. If you each kind of start picking the same things, or we notice a theme, they can start coming back so that in the next study session, they already can answer, like, what is, is there another funding? Is there this? So we can start knocking things off, if that makes sense, and narrow it down by the next one. So maybe look through this list, this is a lot to think about. And I think the, the overall things that you guys are talking about is, think about resident impact, think about, is there another option to, to fund it? And if not, then would there be recurring costs? That's another one. And then the last one is whether it is already earmarked, and that's a good point, because some of these, like, that's why we didn't include some of them, like your app. We are definitely doing an app, but there might be some in here that technically are going to be included that we could, we could take off as well and clean that up for you a little bit. But maybe you could each individually send, like, I want more information on these, and we could start getting some information, so the next one, we can come to you with the answers. And then just kind of narrow it down as we go.
The only other suggestion I would have, and I'm not really, I don't have a solution for the suggestion, but I still have the suggestion, is to get more resident feedback. So like, some things that I heard when we did the water rate study is, why didn't you send it electronically, do an electronic survey? And then Supervisor Walsh, you brought up the point of if people are responding to the survey more than once, which I actually hadn't thought of as being an issue, but would be something we want to avoid. So if there's a way that we could avoid that and do it electronically, because I think mailing it is great, but maybe there are some of those residents who, maybe they're not going to write it or mail it back, but they would respond to an email survey. So if there would be a way for us to have mail it out and/or do the survey, just so that we, so that when it comes to, oh, how did you spend the money? Well, we didn't just have three or four residents give their feedback or what they're prioritizing, but we had, you know, robust participation, and that may help us as well in narrowing down to decide what to prioritize.
And that's something we're trying to figure out even for just general survey input, because I know some of the ones around the area, they were getting actual feedback from our residents, who are very vocal even to us. They were actually replying to Birmingham's and West Bloomfield's, and so they're getting answers from non-residents. So that was with people trying to geo-tag. Well, all that meant was you had to physically be in there. So when they were shopping in Birmingham, they fill it out. So then they said, now you got to pick an address. Well, they just picked a random address or a parcel ID. So we're trying to figure out to get around the ones that know the systems. And so if IT has suggestions, and, or any, if anybody hears of any vendors out there, we've looked at some of the more obvious ones that others around are already, the immediate ones that are having problems. I've, I've reached out to theirs. But if you do hear of vendors also on things like this that you want us to look at, because we're trying to find one that can figure out, they're geo-tagged, and they know something about their house that's not easily, like, you could go on BSNA and find out what a parcel ID is, who lives at that address, and so people were just giving fake information. So if there's a.
Your concern is that people were submitting a response to the survey, but they weren't really residents?
They weren't really residents?
As opposed to sending more than one?
Both, so.
So you, most, most of the, the survey, the professional ones, like online, like Qualtrics, I think is one, they track by IP address. So if you're sending it from your phone, your phone has an IP address, you can't send more than one or it disqualifies.
You send it from your laptop, your desktop, so that's still.
Your work, your work computer, your home computer.
You could send, actually, I have six devices. I could send it on six different, and I know it sounds silly, but I know at least one person from our community that has voted multiple times because they've mentioned a name to me.
If a few, if a few people did that, I mean, hopefully we'll have hundreds of responses.
Right. What if part of the survey?
I would hope for thousands of responses.
Thousands would be great.
I'd take hundreds, but I would love thousands.
Danny, what if part of the survey had your, your water sewer account number had to be there, or your tax ID number from your property had to be there? That's something that I couldn't fudge and say, I'm you, and.
You could, you could look it up.
You can look it up on BSNA. That's what I mean, they've, everybody.
But that takes more time. But that takes more time than just-
But you also don't want to deter, like, a resident might be like, oh, I don't know my tax ID, so I'm not going to do it.
We need something easy. So, if you do hear of vendors, like, what was yours?
Qualtrics.
Qualtrics.
T-T-R-I, is it with an X?
Yeah, so if you do hear, that is something that we absolutely want. The one that seemed to be the best was also $50,000 for a 20,000-person community, so ours would be $100,000. So, and they said that they only get even a year later about 100 people. So, at $50,000-
That's like a professional, served, like a pollster you're talking about, like, I'm, Qualtrics is just a website.
No, no, not a pollster, this is a website.
You just create a survey.
It's called Bang the Table.
Okay.
So, Bang the Table presents themselves as this community's, it's branded as this community is, is sending you a survey, but it's something called Bang the Table, there's a whole bunch of them out there that you private-label or you white-label, and it goes by resident number. So, when I started asking them their prices, and they're 20, 22,000, and I said, okay, I'm going to wait a year and I'm going to ask you, I waited a year, she's like, well, we're up to about 200 now that use it. So, that one we knocked off because that cost value, there's no return of value, but the concept was good. So, somebody else is going to eventually, you know, not, I don't want to say rip them off, but they'll figure out how to make it cheaper and better. So, that's why the more vendors we hear about, if you, if you see a community where you like what they're doing, tell me, I'll reach out, find out who they're using, because that's how I found three or four of them, was just by reaching out to communities that accidentally sent me a survey, because I live near their communities, so. Anything you guys can do to help on that one, we would love to have a better, quicker way to access community ideas. And that would also be part of the app.
It, you know, it doesn't help when we spend a lot of money to try and do it electronically or by mail, and we don't get many responses. So, unlike, we invited the public to this, and we don't have participation. So, like you said, the bang for the buck, it's got to be worth the money that we're going to spend to, to get the results, to get enough people to respond.
And when we do the community ones, they'll be later at night, you know, probably 7:00, like a normal start time, so that they're after work. So, and we might do some during the day, you know, to, to reach one group, if you're talking about seniors or retirees, you might do nights to, to reach the working. So, we're going to try and reach them where they are, but you're right, like, if people aren't showing up, the, the only way we can go is, I know you all get emails and calls too, is, there are a lot of emails and calls that I'll start to keep track of things, but if there was a way to do it digitally, it would save us all a lot of time. So, please do, if you know of some vendors, send those my way, please. Same with Carrie and Gail out there, anybody who gets them.
I guess the last thing I'll say to treasurer, a point that Treasurer Keeps made earlier about the strategic plan, I do think that would also help us in prioritizing, because then we will have the long-term vision and then can kind of make a timeline for when these things could happen, and then figure out how to pay for them.
That's, that's my baby. That's what I really want. We're open meetings now, so I can admit that I really, really want that strategic plan, because it does, it guides you.
We've talked about that.
Yeah.
And, but it was an expense, and in the first year, you didn't want to have to do that, but-
No, because we had the water sewer, so we were trying to limit, you know, the amount of consultants, the amount of extras and, and the money, but-
But that would give us the ultimate direction, and then, like, like Stephanie said, you know, figure out what's most important, and then what things we can fund or have funding lined up for, what things we can get grants for, and what then our next priorities are for the ARPA to benefit everybody the most.
So, would that be something that you would all be interested in, some numbers coming back to you for sure on that one?
I would say yes, for me.
Yes. So, I'll put that one on there for sure. That wasn't technically a, well, I'm just asking for information. Are you writing notes on me? I always get nervous, he's like, she's going to jail for this.
I'll represent you, Danny.
Every time we talk, he's like this.
I'm supplementing my memory, so I don't forget.
All right. Well, I really appreciate everybody's time, thank you, and like I said, if you could just think about those questions and, and send some of, like, your top ones, saying, I really want to learn more about this, then I can hit up the different department heads and have them start working on that for us. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all for coming.